Good evening and welcome to Murfreesboro City Council, March 21, 2013. And we have many guests with us tonight, but one special guest, a scout, Peter Osborne. Peter, would you please stand up? We're very pleased to have you here, and you're working on your citizenship in the community merit badge with Troop 416 from First Baptist Church. And your dad, Michael, is here, and your brother Levi is here. So we welcome all of you, and we're proud to have you here. And good luck in your scouting, and good luck as you go through life. We're very pleased you're here today. And also, we have Jack Sandifer. Are you working on the same merit badge? Well, bless your heart. Good. We're glad you're doing that, too. And are you also with Troop 416? Very good. We're glad you have you with us, too, Jack. Thanks very much. Mr. Washington, if you take the chair for a minute, I have a special presentation. Mr. Washington, members of the council, it's always a special occasion to get to recognize family in Murfreesboro, and those who, I guess, in some ways have been here a little longer than others of us, who kind of rolled downhill from Cannon County years ago. But the Sanders and the Byrne families have been special members of our community for a long time, even those that go and then turn around and come back. And so I want to recognize them. If they will come up, many of you will remember, for a number of years, we had Sandburn Drive in Murfreesboro. And when Mr. Young and Mr. Lamb and a number of other people got real excited about Middle Tennessee State University and naming Middle Tennessee Boulevard after MTSU, several streets kind of lost their names in the process. So I have some special folks with us tonight that I want to make a little special presentation. I'll ask Susan Sanders to introduce those persons who are with her.
This is my sister, Virginia Byrne Sanders Huddleston, and her husband, Bob Huddleston, who is also a native of Murfreesboro. You probably know Mr. Alvis Huddleston, that was part of the city for many years, and Miss Minnie, his wife. So we have gone back a number of years.
Great. Well, and putting the two families together, we made a drive named Sandburn Drive, and that's gone. And to go back and commemorate it again, we have named the bridge, and quite a bridge it is, I must tell you. Those of us who were on the council when Mr. Shackleton suggested we spend eleven and a half million dollars to build that bridge, we kind of went, "Huhhh."
That was a nice bridge.
Yes. We're very pleased to present the members of your family this commemorative sign, and if you go out on South Rutherford, you will see the Sandburn Bridge, named in the memory of the Sanders and the Burns families, and those who are still here with us, and we're very pleased to make that presentation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd also like to thank those folks that lived on Sandburn Drive for changing their street address, because they all had to change and get a new address. And did you tell me something, Mr. McFarland, about?
I did. We were doing the Demuses on Manny Avenue. We just got finished with the Demuses project, and as we were in the course of finishing that old house, we found the old street markers that used to be for the city of Murfreesboro. So if you drive by there, we use those to make a fence, and you'll see Sandburn Drive that's on one of the old markers there. It's really neat.
So we still remember. How about that? Thanks for being with us tonight. Thank you very much. And I believe Ms. Logan has a... Shannon, you come to us with exciting things every week, and so here you are again. It's great to see you again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Well, tonight, I'm very pleased and honored to present to you the first inaugural class of the Murfreesboro Citizens Academy. And I have 12 members of the academy here tonight seated right here on these rows behind me. We had an excellent time, and we really learned a lot about each other and about our community. And I think that we've really made 12 new friends, I hope, and also have started an outreach effort and an engagement effort with our community that we'll just hopefully build from there. And I know that my 12 friends behind me here are going to help us go out and continue to try to engage and enrich our community ever more. We have put together a highlight reel, if you don't mind, I'd like to show it real quick from our communications department. And then I'd just like to read the names of those present tonight and make sure to recognize them for their participation and their volunteer spirit for joining us in our first inaugural Citizens Academy.
That'd be great. Please proceed.
If we could, I'd like to give all of our members that participated in this for eight weeks a round of applause.
Why don't you introduce them and let them stand? How about that?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. We have with us tonight Mr. Richard Baines, Ms. Judy Sanangelo.
Please stand and remain standing.
Mr. Phil Sanangelo, Ms. Marie Trot, Ms. Pat Eisenbice, Mr. Clyde Franklin, Mr. Roger Sanders, Mr. Mark Swiker. And then behind that, we have Mr. Jared Barrett, Mr. Stephen Ayers, Dr. Gloria Bonner, Ms. Mary Jo Mitchell, and the very back there, Mr. Sam Dennis.
All right. That's wonderful. We're very...
We had our graduation ceremony the other night, which will be viewable on Channel 3. They're putting together a nice little piece for us on that. And we'll also be doing some promos for this. We would like to continue the spirit of the Citizens Academy. We'll be looking at trying to schedule our next Citizens Academy. I don't have a date or time for that yet, but this group behind me is going to help me with that, and they're going to help us with, hopefully, several other things of projects with you all and with the city moving forward. So thank you for your support of this. It's been a great and exciting time, and I've really enjoyed it, and I think they have, too.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Logan, and thank you. We have had police and fire academies, and now Citizens Government Academy, and we're very thrilled that you're in our inaugural graduating class. And I know that you've learned a great deal, as Ms. Logan is a tremendous facilitator and someone who really believes in the spirit of good government and being able to share that. So thank you all for taking your time for volunteering to do that, and we certainly appreciate that, and look forward to continued support and starting Class Number Two when we get a chance to do that. Thank you all. One last thing before I go into our agenda. The Rutherford County Wellness Council and our City Parks and Recreation Department is beginning a Mayor's Walk program. And our first Mayor's Walk program is Saturday, April the 6th, which will be at Oakland Park at 8:00 a.m. So we're hoping that the community will get out and do a little exercise and join us for the Mayor's Walk, and that real mayor, the county mayor, is supposed to be there. And so it'll be a good time to walk with the mayor and see kind of what's going on. If you will, meet us April the 6th, 8:00 a.m. at Oakland Park for our first Mayor's Walk kickoff. And then we'll have Mayor's Walk at McKnight Park, Siegel Park, on Saturday, April the 13th, Saturday, the 20th of April, at the General Bragg Trailhead and the Discovery Center, and then Saturday, April 27th, at Rogers Park and at Patterson Park. So please join us for the Mayor's Walk. I think it'll be a good time for all and kind of help the community get out in the neighborhood and see what's going on and do a little exercising, which the mayor certainly can do also. All right. Council members, you have your consent agenda. Before you have any questions regarding the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to accept the consent agenda. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to annex an area adjacent to Senking Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Move for passage on second reading.
Second. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to adopt the Greenways, Blueways, and Bike Ways Master Plan.
Move for passage on second reading.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly?
No.
Ms. Gels Harris?
No.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
No.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll hear from the city manager with regards to updates on performance team. Mr. Lyons.
Mayor, this continues the series of reports we've given you following the staff retreat. The team that is focused on performance is going to talk to you tonight about the work that they've been doing. So we've got Mr. Dana Richardson, Mr. Gary Whitaker, going to talk to us about what they've been working on.
Excellent. Our performance team... To follow up with what Mr. Lyons has said, the city manager had charged the city staff with developing concepts that can be ingrained into and practiced by our employees, and I think we've heard from several groups before, leading our team inclusively, empowering employees, sharing information generously, and the category of focus on the customer performance, which is being led by our committee, and that's comprised of Mr. Joey Smith, Ms. Susan McGannon, Aaron Tucker, and Mr. Gary Whitaker. The performance committee's objective is to identify ways and means which can help city entities and employees improve their performance both individually and collectively so that every day and every way, we can get better and better. And to illustrate this, just as the runner is clear about what he wants to accomplish, winning the race, we need to be clear about what we intend to achieve by identifying our goals. We need to determine the challenges we face by reviewing our processes. We also need to evaluate our information and our findings, and ultimately, we need to apply the recommended changes. And this would produce a successful result. In order to make sure we are a winning team, this is hopefully something that we put together that would help our employees and that we can carry on with them. And Mr. Whitaker, he would conclude this.
Evening, Mayor, council.
Good evening and welcome.
How can we improve what we do? Our team got together and thought about this. We do a lot of different jobs in the city: police, fire, building code, sanitation. But sometimes, we need to step back and kind of look at how we can improve what we do on a daily basis. So we came up with an idea. And to implement our idea, you first must identify your goals, then determine what your challenges that you face, evaluate information and your findings, and finally, apply those changes. I'd like to give you an example of how this can be used. If you remember, a few years ago, we had the storms that came through. We had in excess of 500 homes that were damaged just in the city of Murfreesboro. We went out in teams of twos. I think there were a total of nine teams. We would actually go to each structure, fill out a report, and take pictures, and bring that information back. Staff would then take that information, put it in a spreadsheet, and then that information would go to GIS, and then they would populate maps. Those maps were valuable, because we produced them every day. FEMA, FEMA needed for a declaration. Utility companies wanted it to know where the damage was at, major damage, minor damage. So very useful information, but a very cumbersome process. Took a long time, if you can imagine, for staff people to take nine people out, gather reports, bring that back at one time, trying to mix the pictures, match the pictures with it. So if we apply our idea to this process, we have to identify our goals first, and our goal was to streamline that process, to make it better and faster. What was our challenges? It was technology and time. Time was of the essence to get that information out. So we got all the parties involved: inspectors, the IT department, the GIS department. We talked about how to make it better, and we came up, we need to find an application for our smartphone. We all have our smartphones. We have them with us at any time of day. They're typically with us. So we implemented that application. Now, what was a four-step process, you see at the top: field, the process, bringing information back, GIS, and then mapping. Now what we have, and we're still going through the trials. We went through one just a couple of weeks ago. We hope to have this thing up live and running in the next couple of months. But basically, what we did was we got an app for our smartphone. And I'd like to brag on our IT department and GIS department. You can't just buy an app and it does everything you need. So they went in and do whatever IT people do to make it work. I had no clue what that is. But now, we have on our, basically on our phone, a drop-down menu. It has the same information that we would fill out on paper. It's touchscreen. We ran into, a lot of times, we'd go in and there would be no address on the house. This thing will actually use GPS to locate it and tell you the map and parcel. Then you take the pictures. Once you've finished that file, you hit send. It automatically goes to the map, populates the map. Now, what was interesting is when we were doing this, you could watch on your computer screen remote location as inspectors were going out and making their inspections. They would pop up on the field. When you put the cursor on it, it automatically brings up the picture and the write-up of it. So you can see, we went from a four-step process to a two. Here's what our team challenges the other department heads throughout the city and employees: Look at your processes. Apply our idea, and let us know how we can improve them. I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time, if there's any.
Any questions for Mr. Whitaker or Mr. Richardson regarding the performance team?
This has been a good example of how the leadership teams and how they've broken up into groups to really get us to the next level, have collaborated, and a lot of their efforts continue to merge into one. So here was a situation where our employees collaborated. They worked together. They figured out how they could share information. And so here's a real-life situation, when we would have an emergency, where we've taken that process, gotten it a lot more compact, a lot more efficient. It's going to be good for us. It's going to be good for our homeowners. Certainly be helpful when we work with Rutherford County in emergency management. And this was all done internally. We didn't get a consultant on this. This was our team working together, thinking out of the box, getting creative, and fixing something at very low cost. And we continue, as we get our employees together and work collaboratively, we're really seeing some outstanding results, and going to be more proud of them.
Very good. Council members, any questions or comments? We thank you and appreciate your efforts, and look forward to more, bigger, and better things.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. All right. This time, we'll consider for renewal a certificate of compliance for Tejas I Patel at Easy Corner Wine and Spirits, 350 North Thompson Lane.
Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Wright.
This is something required by the state every two years, and Mr. Patel has completed his application. We've done the background check, and all the other conditions have been met that we require.
All right. So this is in compliance. Is there a motion that we renew this certificate of compliance?
So moved.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. You have your certificate. This time, we'll consider recommendations of the planning commission to schedule public hearings regarding an annexation request for approximately 1.02 acres along South Church Street at Joby Jackson Parkway. PJ Patel is the applicant. A zoning application for approximately 1.02 acres along South Church Street at Joby Jackson Parkway to be zoned highway commercial CH District simultaneous with annexation. PJ Patel is the applicant. Zoning application for approximately 0.9 acres along Iron Gate Boulevard to be rezoned from single-family residential 15 RS-15 District to highway commercial CH District. James B. Haynes family, real estate, is the applicant. A zoning application for approximately 15.2 acres along Memorial Boulevard to be rezoned from single-family residential 15 RS-15 District to highway commercial district. James B. Haynes family, real estate, is the applicant. A PUD amendment application for approximately 44 acres along Rucker Lane. Adams and Parks Investment is the applicant. Zoning application for approximately 21.9 acres along Robert Rose Drive to be rezoned from highway commercial district to residential multifamily 16 RM-16 District. North Church LLC is the applicant. A rezoning request for approximately 6.9 acres along Hazelwood Street to be rezoned from highway commercial CH District and residential multifamily 12 RM-12 District to residential multifamily 16 RM-16 District. Kathy and Wayne Noble's Period Construction and Oakland Properties are the applicants. And a zoning application for approximately 1.77 acres along Dill Lane to be rezoned from planned commercial development, PCD District, to residential multifamily 16 District. Larry Talbert is the applicant. Mr. Adalot, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of council. During this regular meeting on March 6th, the planning commission conducted public hearings and recommended for approval all of the items that you just read. We need for the council to schedule public hearings on these matters.
Ms. McGannon?
Mayor, I would suggest April 18th.
April the 18th? As a hearing?
Be late.
Council members, you've had April the 18th suggested as a public hearing for these matters?
Still moved.
Hmm? Mr. Gilly's motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. A motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Adalot. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the city engineer as to a contract for construction of Joby Jackson Parkway from Church Street, US 231 South to I-24, a contract with geotechnical observations and testing services for Joby Jackson Parkway from Church Street, US 231 South to I-24, and construction improvements to intersection of Thompson Lane and Sulphur Springs Road. Welcome. Mr. Griffiths?
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, and members of the city council. The first item I have for you tonight is a contract for construction of Joby Jackson Parkway from Church Street to I-24. You previously approved a contract with TDOT and Rutherford County to jointly fund improvements to Joby Jackson from I-24 to US 231 South. The project, when completed, will provide an alternate access from the southern portion of the city and county to the east and more directly to I-24. The project will include improvements to about a one-mile section of existing Joby Jackson, portions of which were formerly named County Farm Road, extending from Church Street to the east to the CSX Railroad. The improvements would then include an almost 1,300-foot or quarter-mile-long bridge over both the CSX Railroad and the Stones River. The project would then continue to the existing interchange at I-24. We've included a site map for your review. Seven bids were received on January 24th of this year for the construction of the improvements. The low bid, in the total of $10,858,559.2 cents, was submitted by Highways Incorporated of Brentwood, Tennessee. Highways has completed several projects of this magnitude with the Tennessee Department of Transportation, and has most recently completed two sections of Veterans Parkway extending from Highway 96 to Highway 99 for the city. Staff and our consultant, Wiser Company, have reviewed the qualifications of Highways and are satisfied they are capable of completing this project within the specified contract time. Wiser Company has provided a tabulation of the bids and a letter of recommendation which are attached. The budgeted amount for this project and the latest CIP plan was $10,400,000. As mentioned previously, TDOT is providing partial funding for the project in the amount of $2 million. Parkway to be zoned highway commercial CH District simultaneous with annexation. PJ Patel is the applicant. Zoning application for approximately .9 acres along Iron Gate Boulevard to be rezoned from single-family residential 15 RS-15 District to highway commercial CH District. James B. Haynes family real estate is the applicant. A zoning application for approximately 15.2 acres along Memorial Boulevard to be rezoned from single-family residential 15 RS-15 District to highway commercial district. James B. Haynes family real estate is the applicant. A PUD amendment application for approximately 44 acres along Rucker Lane. Adams and Parks Investment is the applicant. Zoning application for approximately 21.9 acres along Robert Rose Drive to be rezoned from highway commercial district to residential multifamily 16 RM-16 District. North Church LLC is the applicant. A rezoning request for approximately 6.9 acres along Hazelwood Street to be rezoned from highway commercial CH District and residential multifamily 12 RM-12 District to residential multifamily 16 RM-16 District. Kathy and Wayne Nobles, Perry Construction and Oakland Properties are the applicants. And a zoning application for approximately 1.77 acres along Dill Lane to be rezoned from planned commercial development, PCD District, to residential multifamily 16 District. Larry Talbert is the applicant. Mr. Adalot, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of council. During this regular meeting on March 6th, the planning commission conducted public hearings and recommended for approval all of the items that you just read. We need for the council to schedule public hearings on these matters.
Ms. McGannon?
Mayor, I would suggest April 18th.
April the 18th? As a hearing? Council members, you've had April the 18th suggested as a public hearing for these matters.
So moved.
Hmm? Mr. Gilli's motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. A motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Adalot. This time we'll consider recommendations of the city engineer as to a contract for construction of Joby Jackson Parkway from Church Street, US 231 South to I-24. A contract with geotechnical observations and testing services for Joby Jackson Parkway from Church Street, US 231 South to I-24. And construction improvements to intersection of Thompson Lane and Sulphur Springs Road. Welcome. Mr. Griffiths?
Thank you, Mayor Bragg and members of city council. The first item I have for you tonight is a contract for construction of Joby Jackson Parkway from Church Street to I-24. You previously approved a contract with TDOT and Rutherford County to jointly fund improvements to Joby Jackson from I-24 to US 231 South. The project, when completed, will provide an alternate access from the southern portion of the city and county to the east and more directly to I-24. The project will include improvements to about a one-mile section of existing Joby Jackson, portions of which were formerly named County Farm Road, extending from Church Street to the east to the CSX Railroad. The improvements would then include an almost 1,300-foot or quarter-mile-long bridge over both the CSX Railroad and the Stones River. The project would then continue to the existing interchange at I-24. We've included a site map for your review. Seven bids were received on January 24th of this year for the construction of the improvements. The low bid in the total of $10,858,559.2 was submitted by Highways Incorporated of Brentwood, Tennessee. Highways has completed several projects of this magnitude with the Tennessee Department of Transportation, and has most recently completed two sections of Veteran Parkway, Veterans Parkway for extending from Highway 96 to Highway 99 for the city. Staff and our consultant, Wiser Company, have reviewed the qualifications of Highways and are satisfied they are capable of completing this project within the specified contract time. Wiser Company has provided a tabulation of the bids and a letter of recommendation which are attached. The budgeted amount for this project and the latest CIP plan was $10,400,000. As mentioned previously, TDOT is providing partial funding for the project in the amount of $2 million. The remaining funding is divided equally by the city and Rutherford County. Therefore, an additional $229,280.1 is currently required from the city to fund, to fully fund the project at the current bid. Our consultants are reviewing the plans to determine possible cost savings on the bridge foundations and/or retaining wall heights to help reduce the difference. Staff proposes to use the CIP funds from previously completed projects that were completed under budget to cover any additional cost. We recommend award of the contract to Highways Incorporated, subject to review and approval of the agreement by the city attorney. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Griffith regarding this project?
What's the timetable for completion?
It's a two-year, scheduled for a two-year project. By the time we get final approval from TDOT to move forward, we expect to begin completion of, to begin construction, I apologize, the 1st of May.
And so this will eliminate an at-grade crossing?
It's not a crossing at this time. It'll actually be a new connection from, it actually deadends now, Joby Jackson does, on the Church Street side, and it'll connect on over to the interchange there at I-24.
So it won't follow County Farm over to the nursing home. It'll come north of the nursing?
That's correct.
Community helper, I can't remember the name of the...
Yes, sir.
Community care.
The only thing we have in that area now is just a, it's quite a bit smaller bridge. It just crosses the river there and actually floods. It's an old county bridge that floods during heavy rainfall.
It's just a one-lane bridge, isn't it?
Yeah, very small.
Yeah.
All right. Other questions for Mr. Griffith regarding this recommendation? Do we need to vote on these individually?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. McGannon. So is there no questions? We have this contract for construction and the low bidder.
Move for approval. Second.
All right. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Second item is contract for geotechnical observations and testing services for the Joby Jackson Parkway from Church Street to I-24. As with any project of this magnitude, specialized testing will be required on both the concrete and steel materials, primarily with a bridge construction. However, due to the fact that the project is partially funded by TDOT, a significant amount of additional testing will be required on the multiple constructions item, multiple construction items, including asphalt, both field and plant testing, limestone aggregate, including base stone, backfill of the structure, pipe bedding, and backfill of utility trenches, and concrete, both field and plants testing with that. On January of this year, our consultant for the project, Wiser Company, requested proposals from three consultants to provide this geotechnical materials testing. Based on their past experience with bridges and work on previous city projects, Wiser Company recommended that TTL was the most qualified to complete the project. Subsequently, staff requested receiver proposal from TTL to perform the testing services. We've included a copy of their proposal for your review. While TTL proposes to provide personnel on an as-needed basis for the testing, staff believes they will be present for a significant amount of the construction time due to the increased testing requirements by the DOT. In addition to the TTL personnel, two to three city inspectors will also be required on-site to observe and document construction activities in order to meet TDOT's requirements. TTL's estimate to complete the work is, based on their experience with similar projects, is $440,160. Again, this is a significant increase to our typical construction testing cost, primarily due to the increased TDOT requirements. As mentioned previously, Rutherford County will be responsible for half of the overall construction cost. Staff proposes to fund any additional construction testing costs using CIP funds from previous projects that were completed under budget. We recommend the award of the contract to TTL, subject to review and approval of the agreement by the city attorney.
So we wouldn't ordinarily do this kind of testing if the city and the county was paying for it. Is that correct?
Nowhere is near to this degree, sir. It's quite a, it's quite a bit of testing and report, and not only testing, but also reporting requirements that if you use state money, you have to follow their guidelines.
So we're going to get a million and a half dollars from the state instead of two million?
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
All right. Council members, you have this explanation of a contract for geotechnical observations and testing services. Are there any questions for the city's engineer regarding this recommendation?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Final item I have tonight is construction improvements to the intersection of Thompson Lane and Sulphur Springs Road. This is a project we've been anxious to get underway for some time. During the city council's meeting on April 7th, 2011, you authorized the design of the intersection improvements to Sulphur Springs and Thompson Lane. The improvements include the addition of left-turn lanes on all approaches and signalization of the intersection. The proposed improvements are recommended to enhance both the safety and the overall operation of the subject intersection. We do note that the widening of Thompson Lane from Northwest Broad Street to Memorial Boulevard is on the 2025 major thoroughfare plan, and the city has provided matching funds for TDOT's design project. However, experience indicates the estimated $35 million project would take some, many years to reach the actual construction phase. Staff is recommending the interim improvements to the intersection to allow turning vehicles their own lanes, thus facilitating the through movements. The signal will also be fully actuated to enhance its operation. Currently, the, our annual paving contractor, Hoover Incorporated, is under contract with TDOT to begin resurfacing of Thompson Lane, which is much needed from Broad Street to Memorial Boulevard. We understand that that is scheduled to begin in May, so our effort, our hope is, is to complete, to complete the initial stormwater and grading work with our annual stormwater and concrete contract in order to be able to get, to get out ahead of the, of their planned resurfacing. Hoover would then be able to complete the paving section, and the signal would also be installed with the annual lighting and signal contractor. The budgeted amount for the project and the latest CIP plan was $700,000. The latest cost estimate has been prepared, indicates that the project is still within budget of our estimate. If we can meet TDOT's resurfacing schedule, we estimate that we'll be able to save about $50,000 on the resurfacing portion of that. We recommend the construction of the improvements to Thompson Lane and Sulphur Springs intersection using the existing City of Murfreesboro maintenance contracts. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Griffith?
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion and second. Any questions on the motion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. This time we'll consider recommendations of the city recorder with regards to hotel occupancy tax compliance examination. Ms. Wright?
Mayor, this is something that we've never had done before by professional organizations such as the CPA firm out of Telahoma. I, through one of my associations with the government accountants, met with this group, and my staff met with them here at City Hall. We also invited some county representatives in case they might be interested. And they've got, they've kind of got this down. They found a niche, and they go into the hotels, they have an introduction letter, they look at the folios for the hotel guests, they look at sales tax returns, they look at any information that will help them compare to the hotel motel tax returns that are filed with us, to see if they're filing accurately, to see if they have questions. They help explain things if maybe they didn't understand how they should be completed properly. And they'll give us a report, they'll give the hotel a report to what their findings are for each one. Of course, these are confidential because their information is confidential, and we keep it as such, like we do business license and other things in my office. We did find out that Smyrna's used this firm more than once. They hired them, they were happy with their results, and they did have them come back and do an update at least once, and I believe they budgeted to do it again for a second update. We currently have 36 operators in the city, and the proposal is to do the previous three years, starting with April 2010, going through April of 2013, which they'll be filing soon. And this work is supposed to begin in May. The budget already includes $39,500, which is the estimate they gave us. And I think this is something that's timely. We obviously, as you can see from my letter, we received $886,000 last year in hotel motel tax revenue. This year compared to last year through February, we've already received an additional $62,000 over last year's collections. So I think we've grown this to the point it's time for someone to look at this. And because we have hotels who have resident-type occupancy, which don't pay the hotel motel tax if they're 30 days or more, we have full-service hotels who have meals, so their income, if I were to look at their sales tax return information, I would not be able to differentiate some of these things. And this company has done this for several cities and counties, and I think, I think that would be a good one for us to have do that for us. So I do recommend approval.
Any questions for Ms. Wright regarding this recommendation?
Ms. Wright, is this a one-time inspection or verification, or is this something that we would do with some regularity?
Well, depending on our success with this, if we think it was beneficial to us and to the operators, we can do it again. This first proposal was to do a three-year period. After that, we may want to wait three years and do it every three years, or we could say we want to do it every year, or we could do it. We had, one proposal was to do it in thirds and do so many per year, but we couldn't really think of a fair way to decide who's first and who's second and who's third. So we decided it'd be better to just do everybody at once. But we can, we can do that. Once we see the results, we may want to evaluate doing this regularly, whether it's annually or some other, some other number of years, we can decide.
Other questions? Will they audit, see, we got half of the hotel motel tax from Rutherford County, gets the other half? Is that correct?
Well, we each have a hotel motel tax, so they'll be auditing only ours. The percentage is equal, and they'll only be looking at ours. The county has decided they're not interested in participating in that this time, and I don't know the reasonings on that. Like I said, Smyrna has done it, and we just feel like it's time to look at that. Obviously, they have more hotel motel entities than we do because they have Smyrna's and Laverne's and ours. But at this time, it's just ours, and they'll only be looking at our returns compared to the folios.
Any other questions? You have this recommendation.
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. A motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time we'll consider for adoption a resolution to amend, reaffirm, and re-adopt the city's occupational safety and health plan. Ms. McGannon?
Mayor Bragg and members of council, as you know, the city has its own program. TOSHA requires that we review it and update it periodically. We have now done that, and they need an indication from you that you still support the plan as it is represented by the attachment to this resolution.
Do we need to vote on each one of these separately?
You may, but it's not necessary.
All right. Is there a motion to amend, reaffirm, and re-adopt the city's occupational safety and health plan?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. A motion and second. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time you have before you the statements to be considered for payment. If there are any questions regarding any of those bills or the amounts, now's a good time to bring that up. If there are no questions, is there a motion that we pay the bills?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time you have before you the statements to be considered for payment. If there are any questions regarding any of those bills or the amounts, now's a good time to bring that up. If there are no questions, is there a motion that we pay the bills?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
I recommend to you tonight the reappointment to our Greenway Projects Committee, Dan Sharley, Martin McCullough, Anita Pertle, Troy Robinson, and Kent Seiler, and to our Historic Zoning Commission, Linda Anderson, a reappointment, and Rick Cantrell, a reappointment.
Move for approval of the mayor's recommendation.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
At this time, is there other business from the staff or the city council to come before the city council? Mr. Adalot?
Thank you, Mayor Bragg and members of council. You should have a letter before you regarding a supplemental lease agreement with the Discovery Center, and I'd like to present that for you tonight. The Discovery Center currently leases land under its building from the city. The center has received a grant to construct a new outdoor exhibit and natural play area to be called "A Bridge to Nature," and would like to locate this on the southeastern side of the museum, adjacent to the patio and below the parking lot, constructed in connection with the recent addition to the museum. Parks and Recreation staff is proposing a supplemental lease to cover this additional area. The additional area is indicated on the drawing that is attached to this memo. All costs associated with the new exhibit and play area will be covered by the Discovery Center. The annual rent payable to the city will continue to be $1 per year. At its regular meeting on March 20th, the planning commission recommended that the council approve a supplemental lease with the Discovery Center, and additional details are provided in Angie Jackson's memo to the planning commission, which is attached. All costs associated with the new exhibit and play area will be covered by the Discovery Center. The annual rent payable to the city will continue to be $1 per year. At its regular meeting on March 20th, the Planning Commission recommended that the council approve a supplemental lease with the Discovery Center, and additional details are provided in Angie Jackson's memo to the Planning Commission, which is attached. It is recommended that the council approve the supplemental lease, which has been prepared by the city's legal department.
Thank you, Mr. Adelit. Is there any questions for Mr. Adelit regarding this supplemental lease agreement with Discovery Center?
I'd move we approve the lease.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second to approve this lease agreement. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Lyons.
Mayor, I've got three items for you this evening. The first is a letter you'll see from Terry Taylor and Darren Gore about an emergency purchase. On March 14th, they were doing some sewer repair work on South Baird Lane. They needed to make some asphalt repairs to the street. There was only one source to get asphalt that day, and so with Hawkins, and it was over the $10,000 limit that does require city council approval, so we're asking for your approval of the $10,397.81 bill from Hawkins.
Mr. Gore's going to pay that out of his salary if we don't approve that, is that correct? Is Mr. Gore here to defend himself? I'm sorry.
Stormwater management.
Stormwater management, okay, good.
Move for approval. Second.
Thank you, a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
My next two recommendations, Mayor, are to both save some money and collect some money, so I think I'm hoping I'm going in the right direction. You'll see a letter before you from the PFM Group, that is your financial advisor. Mr. Crumley brought to you a contract with PFM last council meeting. They have been looking at the refinancing of water and sewer, state revolving loan fund debt, as well as a taxable loan that the airport has to refinance those. The market has moved in our direction, and after analyzing either a competitive sale or a private placement with a bank loan, they are recommending that the city pursue